This conference will now be recorded.
All right, welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. We will go ahead and call us the order here. Go ahead with the roll call, please.
Chairman Ryan Green.
Here.
Ron Dane. Jesse Koppel.
Here.
Ben Lee.
Here.
John Merriman.
Here.
All right, we will go ahead and forego our pledge of allegiance. But make sure you take some time to think about America today. And we will move on to the public comment on matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone out there in the public that would like to weigh in on anything that is not on the agenda for today? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to approval of the minutes from January 12, 2021. Got a motion to approve?
I'll move here.
All right. A second.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Ron Dane.
Yes.
Betsy Koppel.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
John Merriman.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the design guidelines and standards. I'd like to acknowledge that Kim is on the call. If anybody has any questions, and I'd like to thank you for coming on here and spending some time with us.
Sure, my pleasure.
All right, so I mean, as everybody knows, we've been going on with this for a little bit. I think everyone's had a chance to digest over the break and really think about this a little bit more. And you know, as we have more development taking place, and I'm sure more is on the way here at some point, as the real estate market heats up around us, we definitely need to start moving on this a little bit more and getting what we want out of it. I think where we left off last time was just with the point that this needs to become, you know, right now, I think it's a little more generic document. Not that there's anything 100% wrong with that, but I think it needs to become more Johnstown. So, and going through this here tonight, I hope you get some good points and go over this the next couple of meetings. Does anybody want to start off on this? We'll pretty much go through it the same way that we have on the zoning and the comprehensive plan. And just start going through it. Ben, I'm sure you had some points you wanted to go over on this.
Can I just say one thing before you guys get started?
Sure.
Kim, one overarching thing is that we're not going to be the village of Johnstown for very much longer. So I think instead of using village wording, we'd like to use either city or municipality or just Johnstown. So I'm not sure how prevalent the village wording is throughout the rest of the document, but I know at the beginning of the document, I saw it kind of a lot. Planning and zoning commission members, you might want to talk about still using the wording Historic Village Center, or maybe just talking about using Historic Center, it's up to you guys. But I think when we're talking about Johnstown as a whole, we should move away from the village wording.
I would agree. I think we just take village out and just refer to it as Johnstown. That would cover all the bases regardless of what the status is and just be Historic Johnstown Center. Or, yeah.
Yes, I agree. I mean, it's going to be easier to add to the document if we just delete. We can do a simple remove on all those words.
I think when we talk about, as far as titling and things like that, I'm all for taking village out of it because we won't be. But as far as talking about the village center, I mean, it is nice to pay some homage to where we came from. So, you know, and in keeping with when we're trying to keep things semi-rural and keep that hometown feel, it's not a bad thing to talk about village, especially when we're talking about our downtown area.
That's a fair call out.
All right, I can support that too. Just keep it on that term.
Okay.
But yeah, Ryan, to your point, I did send back another update based off of feedback from the first round two Bailey that I can start going through if you'd like, or I can open it up to anybody else. I certainly don't want to.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I definitely encourage everybody as you go through this, send us around, you know, send emails back and forth, definitely talk to everybody as we go through this because we want to move through it relatively quickly. So if you send in your emails to Bailey or to the team, definitely, you know, we need to watch how much is debated outside of a public meeting because we want to keep everything out in the daylight. But yeah, I'm all for it. Digest it on your own, send the emails in. And when we get to these meetings, they'll be a lot more productive. Go ahead, Ben, with your points.
A couple of quick things just from the onset. Wasn't sure Bailey if there's been any feedback from reaching out to the steering committee at all.
There hasn't been. Actually, our steering committee has been a little tough to get a hold of.
Okay, I just had that as a point here. So I wasn't sure. I actually just continuing to try and reach out to whomever was on that committee just to get some feedback.
Unfortunately, I think it's the virtual format that's not working for some of our steering committee members.
Would they be able to send in any email or anything like that, or?
Yeah, I might just email them the document and ask them to email me comments back.
I think that might just help give us some continued direction since they're the ones that were in the majority of the meeting.
Right.
So thank you.
We have another meeting coming up. I mean, we'll probably do the next meeting, probably will be a hybrid meeting. So if we give them a chance to show up or call or send an email.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Another overarching call out, just as we get to the end of this and some of the finishing touches, as many of the pictures that we can make as local representations would be great. I know there are some pretty blank, not blank, but maybe just boilerplate representations of what some of these areas look like, but in so much that they are just emphasizing what is currently there. If we can make it local, I think that would help.
In the last round, we did for the 1421 draft, we did put more pictures in that were localized that had some residential commercial standards. But we can plug in a few more from the village that are appropriate in the difference. But the key, the key with a lot of them is there are building types there you don't have now, and we illustrated them the best way we knew. So either the configuration of the building or the wages in the lot or how it relates to the street. So we used examples from other places, but where we can use an example, we'll use one from the village.
Perfect.
Excuse me.
Sure. Yeah, and that makes sense. If they don't have, if they're not, then you've got to find it somewhere. And then just one more overarching call out just from going through the whole document. My feeling just through reading it and the understanding of kind of what this document is looking to to put out there, I think some of the larger buildings, some of the, you know, four-plus story buildings that are listed in here might be incorporated into an additional district that would be inclusive of some of the commercial or enterprise zoning areas. Areas primarily, you know, as maybe the enterprise center, not the commerce center so much that we were talking about the potential for office space or office type work that are more intensive than some of these downtown or, you know, right next to ruralized or residential districts. But I know that just looking at the map, I don't believe that the current zoning breakup incorporates those two areas. And I think that was by design based off of some of the feedback from the steering committee. But to that end, I might say some of the initial concept behind putting this together and the request that was put out there was to incorporate those areas because we know there was definitely going to be some, you know, potential discussion about designing buildings that weren't just facades of metal and steel or just straight facades of brick, especially over in the enterprise center. So my recommendation was adding a district to incorporate those areas as well. And in those areas, I could see things like flex medium and large style buildings, four-plus story buildings potentially. But still, at the end of the day, I think that there is maybe a cap on the story height that might be acceptable within the scope of the village because there's still an identity that we want to protect. And, you know, similar to the logic that you'd have where you don't want, you know, on a college campus, any building to eclipse the height of the library as a means of the library being the center of, you know, that campus. I don't know if we want buildings that are, you know, crazy high that aren't water towers, you know, that are within the village. So that's why I still have a problem with the four-plus story buildings potentially. But I don't know if they would be best served anywhere other than commercial or enterprise districts. So I'll put that out there and see what you guys think, but that's my suggestion.
Yeah, and I should have told you something, you know, does anybody have anything just overall on this? Because I want to go through this the same way that we're doing the zoning page by page. And we'll dive deeper into these topics, but does anybody have anything just overall on this that you noticed at all? And definitely from the public, if there's any public comment overall on this as far as your thoughts, you can weigh in at this point and then we'll just kind of go through it.
I kind of, I just want to say real quick, I kind of like Ben's idea. I haven't been involved with the steering committee throughout the process, so I'm hesitant to make those type of suggestions myself. But I think the idea of the more different categories that we can differentiate gives us the most flexibility and the most, I guess, you know, we can set more rigid standards for each area applicable to the particular areas if we have more. So I like where Ben's going on that idea.
So let me see if I understand that you're thinking of for one of the areas that's the enterprise type zone or the commercial zones that we had, we originally mapped those, but it was felt that it was important to prioritize the corridor, the downtown and adjoining neighborhoods being once to start off with. We can pull those in, but we'll need to get specific about what their boundaries are from a zoning standpoint. So we'll probably need to go and revise the map and show that and then develop standards that are corresponding to it that allow larger mass building in it. But we did in this version go back through and modify, I think we got all the references to it in there to four stories to take it to three in these areas. So the maximum height in that blue area, the orangish brown area, and the Historic Village Center, the purpleish looking area are all in the three-story category max.
If that's the case, then may have been an oversight because I was trying to review my notes, the previous the previous hard copy as well as the updated soft copy. So if I misread that and it's down to three stories max, then I think that's probably appropriate.
Okay.
Sorry, so if we want to start, did somebody have a point?
On page nine, which is where my first note came.
Yeah, that's pretty much, that's where kind of where I started. On page seven, I mean, I have the corridor district that I wanted to kind of talk about, but we'll get into that a little bit more. And we've already kind of started. I think the corridor district is where we're going to have probably the most differences of opinion. I think I kind of see a trend on this. I think I see these corridor districts looking a little bit more like South Campus Gateway on campus or, you know, down Hamilton Road as you get closer to 670. And I don't know necessarily that that's where we want to head. I could be wrong on that assumption and, you know, as far as the western looking accord goes, I know we're trying to stay rural. I know from other conversations, that's where the town wants to stay. We want to stay more rural. So I would hate to see some of these things look that way, and this is where we would change them. So that's my one point on the corridor district. And I kind of see from that map that you just had up earlier, it kind of outlined a little bit more. When I printed this thing out, how my printer printed it out, it didn't look as nice as that. So I kind of have a better idea now. But a lot of town is going to be, you know, the main roads are going to be a corridor district. And that's what's going to give you the look at town as you drive through 37 and 62. So I think it's very important to get those right and get a consistent look out of them, especially as we head out of town because we get into land that is going to be completely new build. As you get into downtown, you're infilling, but as you get out of town, we're going to get, our creative side is going to come in a lot more. So you're talking about on page nine. That's the map. Is that what comes up on mine?
I'm muted, sorry. Page nine on the soft copy is what's in front of you there, the updated copy that Bailey has. My call out about this, just as a reference is, it talks about reference documents to offer more detail in specific areas of the city. Once this document is passed, the interim design guidelines will be replaced by this. I don't know if it makes sense to reference A specifically. And then D, the village strategic plan, has been updated by the comp plan. I don't know how relevant it would be to reference the strategic plan because it's out of date with what has been accepted by planning and zoning council. So I would take those two out and the comp plan and the Greenway master plan and any other plan that might reference in here, but I don't, I don't see a need to reference those two specifically.
That's A and D, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right.
Now, if they serve a greater purpose, correct me, but that's just my call out. I already called out about the map of the enterprise center. Page eight, I think, was a call out to just a question about PUDs and how we would handle PUDs. PUDs right now aren't listed in this document because Bailey, I would assume that the conversation about design within a PUD would happen wholly solely within the conversation of that PUD and be really subjective just to that space and that developer and what they want to bring in. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the idea would be that the PUD would follow this document, not that this document would follow the PUD. So the way that our PUDs are written right now is that they submit a development plan to planning and zoning and then pretty much work with planning and zoning on that plan. And I would, I mean, the PUDs we have in the village right now, I would consider residential. And so they would have to follow the residential design guidelines. But then if later in the future we got a PUD that included commercial, they'd have to follow, you know, the commercial design guidelines we set out here, even if they weren't necessarily in one of these identified districts, they'd still have to follow those guidelines.
Okay.
U D, everything's a little bit more negotiable and conditional use type.
Right.
Just wanted to make that point clarified for everybody in case anybody was curious why it wasn't included because it is a wholly separate process.
Yep. So we are on, we're on that page. Anybody have anything between there and page 12?
Ryan, are the pages you're listing the hard copy or the soft copy?
This copy that we're scrolling through right here.
Okay.
Yeah, I just went on and printed this one out. So on here, like I said on the corridors, I think the look that we're headed for, and I may be wrong, but I think we're headed for that kind of South Campus, Ohio State Gateway area or like a Hamilton Road feel in Gehanna. You're going to have parking in the rear on these. And I see one to three stories. I don't, and you know, as the Ben's call out earlier, I don't know that we need height in these areas. And that's what I would like to see it look a little bit more rural. I know you're going to have this across from Witz, probably down to what is Thorpe's now, Dotson's down to Duncan Plains. What was the Michelson property there, the frontage on that, you're going to see this. And kind of Sportsman's Club out that way eventually, you're going to see this. And that's what you have to take into account is what you're going to see as you drive through. Now, that picture under corridor there, I don't know if you're fine with that or not. But that's, that's kind of what we're angling towards. I think that looks a little bland. I don't really see a rural feel to that, but I may be wrong, and that's why we're on a group here on a commission. So I don't know what your guys' intent there or thoughts are there. I would like to see that be two stories at the most.
I would just like to say that parking in the rear has been a big goal for us for a couple of years now. It makes the street safer to traverse for pedestrians. And actually, it makes the street a bit safer for automobiles too because they actually drive safe, a little bit slower and safer when parking is in the rear because storefronts are closer, so they feel like they need to drive safer. But it also just provides a, you know, a better aesthetic view for us. So I just think that that's probably something we'd want to keep.
Yeah, I'm fine with parking in the back, you know, to an extent. I just don't want to see the buildings right up on the road.
I think what we'd really like to, and what we'd really like to encourage is wider sidewalks and green space in between the storefront and the road to make pedestrians feel more comfortable and safer.
Right.
Yeah. Do we have the language in there, Bailey, that encourages that? Because I like that idea for sure.
I will make sure that it's in there.
Okay.
Because one thing that my overall, one of my overall takes is trying to, it's green space and, you know, anywhere we can require extra green space for commercial or for development, I think is something that is great for the town. So I like to see that in there as much as we can.
And all this won't fill in overnight. I mean, so we're not going to have, you know, wall-to-wall shops down through there that looks like that corridor picture. But I would like to see them broken up a lot more than that. Parking in the back, like I said, is fine. I don't want to drive down through and just see parking lot after parking lot either. And when it comes to runoff, that water runs back on the 62 or 37, you know, that's an issue too. But what I don't want to see is just generic shop after shop area. Like Jesse said, you know, green space in there in between, some tree stands in there in between. I think that's what we want to see to an extent.
Thing to keep in mind though, on the corridor and the parking in the back is especially on 37 heading towards Sundar and the other direction heading towards Alexandria, those residential is behind there. And I'm sure we need to get some feedback if we put parking in the back against the residential. Do you think it might be a good idea to also encourage parking on the side? We can split up the buildings. We see that a little bit down in New Albany.
I think in a lot of places here, it says parking to the rear and side, but correct me if I'm wrong on that. And in that case, I think it would be kind of up to planning and zoning when we review plans to say, and up to administration as well, you know, when somebody comes to us and says we want to develop here, you know, we need to say, okay, well, it says we can have parking in the rear and side, but we'd really encourage you to have it on the side in this case.
I think it was the parking in the rear is the default. And if there are situations you can't, like you have residential zone or there's not enough space or it's existing condition, and you've got to do something about having more parking or something, it's expanding. Then you have parking in the side, and there's provisions there that say if you're going to provide parking in the side. Think about putting in, especially if it's closer to the street like the downtown and there's their buildings that are linked together like in that, in the purple photo, is to continue that storefront feeling is to put an edge on that parking with landscaping or a low knee wall that just takes it along, puts an edge to the parking rather than having it exposed to the street. So that's one of the things. If you want to do side loaded parking, then you need to have some kind of screen or edge. And that's all right. It's in the general section toward the end, the standards that apply to all the areas.
Right.
As we're talking about the corridor district too, a little bit of what I'm trying to pull together in my head is the identity of the village, because I'll agree, the picture there as it's represented, in my mind, I can't get there with seeing buildings massed like that coming down Cushtockton toward New Albany like we have now. In my mind, the future land use map feels diversified well enough to incorporate and identify those different areas of the village that have their unique identity but are still incorporated within the village. And I don't know, I doubt, Kim, that you've seen this, but the corridor on Cushtockton from, what is it, Oregon, pretty much down to Westview maybe, is what we're considering maybe like a residential office space in the new planning and zoning code, which we're still talking through. There's a lot of change. It's going to be a while before we get to that ending. But to me, that residential office space fits in that area because it would allow commercial development, which is in line with the central business that is in our future land use map. But more importantly, we preserve hopefully those structures in that space to where you'd be able to utilize some of those older homes as that type of business or at least that facade and try and continue to maintain at least the visible component of that part of the Johnstown identity in that space. And then as you move further out relative to our future land use map, once you get out to Bigelow and further out of town, then you start feeling maybe something like this, which is a little more heavily commercial, closer mass buildings, you know, feels kind of like a strip shop type of situation where the identity of village starts to dilute a bit out into the countryside where the municipality ends at that point. So it's hard for me boiling the entirety of the village down to two or three different districts, which is why I brought up the commercial and the enterprise side of things. But I also think there's some opportunity with, you know, the corridor district as Ryan called out because I just, I can't feel that, at least in that piece that I called out, that's the residential office. And I can't see that on the south or north Main Street sides either, where we have corridor listed. North Main has some of the larger homes and larger lots in the village as you're coming in. And I just can't see this type of concept in that space. So that's where I am trying to pull all these concepts together. And it's difficult because we just passed the future land use map and we're still talking through the new zoning code. And the new zoning code is a lot more complicated than what we have on the books right now. But I feel like the new zoning code map, how it has districts broken up, maybe too many. But I feel really comfortable with how the future land use map is broken up and the identities that those, that that map kind of conveys relative to how the village is split up. So in my mind, with the, with the design regulation guidelines, that's almost where I'm at. It's been very hard for me to try and boil these down to just a couple districts because I don't, just can't see it applied in that blanket type sense. Hope anybody else is feeling that way.
No, I agree. I think, I think you could see the corridor as that picture shows going from Bigelow almost eventually. And now it's not going to happen overnight, but as the properties become more valuable and people buy those that would want more shops, more revenue, more rent, things like that, having a, having a spot like 62 BBQ or just a Wendy's there, you know, one single shop, you know, just one Napa, you know, the people who own. You know, the people who own those lots, they go a different route. You get a Wendy's and three other shops on that same lot. You get a sixty-two barbecue and three other shops on that lot. So I, I could see it changing, but you would have essentially from down the hill there from Bigelow, all the way almost to Kroger, looking like that. And that's what I would, I'd, I don't know that that's what everybody wants to see. I think we wanna see that broken up a little bit more, like you're saying, with some different uses.
And so to Ben's point, I, I mean, I kinda, I kinda feel what Ben's sentiments are on the North Main Street properties too. I, I think though those big Victorian houses are sort of their own little zone, and I would like to see that protected well, almost under a whole different set of design guideline standards than other areas in my, I feel like. So um, again, I, I'm, I feel like I'm coming in later in the process, cause this is going through a steering committee and a lot of work. But do we wanna consider more districts? I would, I, I, that's the way I feel. I don't, Ben, I don't, is that kinda, are you, is that kinda what you're pushing, proposing?
My proposal to make it easier and to have a, a standard benchmark from which we're all operating is that if we feel like the future land use map is proportioned uh, as desired, that, that maybe is the baseline that we use. Um, uh, understanding to try and make the, the overlay districts um, uh, you know, as few as possible. Um, I, I can certainly get there, and I don't know, especially with the PUD areas and things like that, if you need to include those. Um, cause those standards have pretty much already been set. Um, but especially for those areas of the village that uh, uh, exude the identity that everybody associates with Johnstown. And then emphasize those, that, that with which we want to continue to promote and apply those to the undeveloped areas or the infill areas where we know development is coming. Then you know you've protected the identity that everybody associates with the village. You have it set up to where you'll continue to promote that with whatever comes down the pipeline, be it commercial uh, or residential and infill in any one of those zones that you're looking at. Um, it's just, it's turn of the century. A lot of it is already defined in our zoning guidelines or interim design guidelines right now. It's just a matter of matching the verbiage with the visual, and then trying your best to lay that on top of what we have. But um, again, you have areas within central Ohio that do it very well, and you've got a commercial district that you drive through and you say, wow, you know, it, it may be a lot of brick, but it's tied together. And it feels like you still have the identity of that space throughout all the aspects of the area of the municipality. Um, and that to me is what I am hoping to see with a standardized design uh, regs, both with commercial and residential. I don't want to see old Victorian homes or even infill between those, if any of those lots split, filled in with, with something like the corridor district. I just don't, having rich years, I have, I don't see that a- as an appropriate use of that space and promoting the identity from a design standpoint that we wanna promote. That's my interpretation.
And I agree, and I think everything has stemmed from that design, or from our, our future land use and uh, comprehensive plan. We spent a lot of time on that comprehensive plan. A lot of people weighed in on that. We know where, where the village stands on that. I think we can all, we all, that was our first document pretty much for most of us that we did here. So I think that's set. I think that kinda sets the tone. This backs that up, and then our, our zoning that we're going through now will reinforce all of that. And if the documents don't line up, I've said that before, if the documents don't line up, then we spend a lot of time for nothing. Because they all need to line up and back each other up, because when you go back and a developer comes in and says, well, I wanna do this or that, and we say yes or no for whatever reason, we need evidence, and if you go back to, okay, well, the, the comprehensive plan said this, this backs that up, and our zoning reinforces that, that's, that's what you need. Um, so I'm there too, and I, I would hate to see anything happen to up thirty-seven there, to those old houses. I would hate to see some things come in that look completely out of place. Um, you want, and that's, that's a well-traveled route, especially when you're driving up through, there's a lot of reasons to drive through Johnstown, but if you're going to the fair or something like that, you want people to drive through town and go, wow, you know, this, this all just rolls right in together. So I get it. That's, that's where I am too. Um. Go ahead, Jesse. Sorry.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I wanna get Bailey, I want, just from a logistical or standpoint, it sounds like what we're proposing, it's sort of a big workup. Who, who's gonna be responsible for im- implementing some of these changes if we, if, if we recommend some of these changes? Cause it feels like this might be a major change. Would that be, would that go to you or go back to the developers of this plan?
So Kim is the one who does all the edits for me, just because oh, she has the document right now. But um, we meet and talk about these things, make sure that they're done to the best of our ability. So what I, what I think I'm gonna recommend that Kim does, um, you know, based on your recommendation, is cut back the corridor district on thirty-seven pretty much just to the businesses that are, that are there right now. And unfortunately, I don't see having a historic guidelines piece of this document, just because it, historic preservation and historic guidelines are very, very detailed. And so um, it is a goal of mine to um, go in and do a historic preservation overlay district and do a historic preservation plan. And whether we add that to this document or create a new document, that's fine, but um, I just don't have enough time or enough research put into historic preservation at this moment to add that to this document. So what I think we'll do is just pull back the um, corridor district on the map on thirty-seven, and at a later point, address those historic homes and that historic preservation aspect, because that was a big goal of ours in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen some of that historic preservation. It is detailed in what you can do, and some of it may hinder growth. Um, it might stop some of those shops from becoming something that we didn't, you know, something better that we didn't think of. So I would hate to do that, as long as they're gonna do it respectfully, you know, and, and incorporate that, you know, as Ghostwriter's done, that's great. You know, if somebody comes in there and wants to put a Radio Shack or something, that's not so great. But uh, you know, unless they're gonna do it the right way. Uh, Granville, we're in a good spot though. Granville's gotta have something like that. I'm sure Sunbury probably has something. There's a million little towns around here that have had to do that, that thing. So the precedent's probably been well set. I know Canal does, Grove City probably does. They all have nice, older-looking downtowns, so. Um, we can definitely do that, but that's a good idea to change the, the corridor, just move that down and.
To your point, Ryan, very moved theirs west of town. All of their development, so their downtown still looks nice, or uptown, or whatever town you wanna call it, but they moved all their commercial buildings all up by Kroger and keep that historic character.
And they're a little different than us, cause three comes straight up through, and that's the main route. We have thirty-seven and sixty-two running right through the heart of us. They added a little easier because, yeah, you have thirty-seven that runs up through there, but you have uh, yeah, everything's mostly up three, so it's a lot easier.
Yeah, and, and to Kim's defense, I, I, when the design piece was in play and when steering committee was talking, I don't believe we had passed the uh, the comp plan at that point. So the future land use map was still in flex, so it wasn't necessarily at, at his disposal, at their disposal to use in a finalized format. But I still think using that map as a baseline with how the corridors are set up, or how these overlay districts are set up, a- at least gives an idea of, of the way that we have agreed that we're looking going forward. Um, and would match in that respect.
So we can recommend that, that you got that Bailey and Kim do some sort of reconciliation process with that map for our next draft, maybe. Is that reasonable, Bailey?
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
You put the map back up.
Do we also wanna consider the houses on the uh, South Main side, between K-Seps and Village Hall? It's kind of a similar situation. I, I don't find that would ever be something that'd be comfortable with having a a corridor type development in that area too. I mean, I know there's a few more businesses on that side, but everyone sucks.
Yeah, I don't know that I'd wanna see, well, I mean, I guess corridor technically starts at that on South Main. I guess it starts at what? The church on Concord there. Um, and then heads south there on thirty-seven, but before that, it's all houses. So I think we move it down to Concord area. And then on the north end, it can start north of Leafy Dell.
And then we did say we're taking away adding in the commercial zones, the, the light manufacturing, the enterprise center and the commerce center, right Bailey?
Yeah, we can add those in.
Okay. So my next call out.
And drop the, drop the stories to two.
Yeah, that was, that was my recommendation. Is everybody else good with two? I don't, I don't think we need a lot of height in that corridor.
Again, the wood masses, you know, similarly to that downtown.
If we do a separate district for um, for like office space and industrial centers, do you want those to be three stories, or would you still rather leave those two?
Yeah, if we get into offices, I mean, if you get into that, yeah, you could be, you can do a, you know, I don't know that we need to go over, over three or four really. Um, I think everybody else will probably be there, but if you're talking about in our office park down there, um, down south, I think that's a different animal, because it's tucked back in and away, or if you're in the commerce center, it's tucked back and away. I don't think people would mind a four-story office complex in there, other than the people who live there obvi- over by there, obviously. But I think keeping it three stories or under, I think it can be blocked by trees. You know, the natural landscape, I think, can block some of that out. And you gotta think, if you're standing in town, or if you're standing, even at my house there on Sunset, um, looking south, you're gonna see a three or four-story building. I mean, you can see the, you can see all the houses that are being built back by Poldi there. So you just gotta think what you're seeing at certain points of town. Three, three stories can be hidden by the natural landscape.
I wouldn't recommend going over three.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only other consideration too with height and three should be fine, would just be to align with Chief Wright and the fire department and their capacity and ability to be able to access that with what they have.
Right. And I know that we talked, later on, it'll be brought up, but there's, there's talk about heights. Um, and I'll bring this up later, but if you have a, if you have a certain height, how many stories can you stuff in there is gonna be the next thing that a builder thinks about. Oh, but okay, so everybody's done on, on page twelve then?
My next call out's on page fourteen.
Okay, I have on thirteen for the urban neighborhoods. Um, I think we already talked about, we've talked about attached housing. Um, we've already had that discussion kind of with one neighborhood that came in here, and I know the public feedback was not friendly to, to some attached housing, although it happens already in the village. Um, buildings placed near the edge of the right of way. Again, I, I don't think we're fans of buildings being right up on the street, especially if we're talking about housing now. Um, and kind of areas you can think of where that happens is, you know, right there in New Albany, everybody's been there. Um, you know, the, where you get just a stoop and then you're right up on the road. Now, that picture there is not terrible, but I think if you're talking any closer than that, then that's, that's questionable. Um.
Hey Ryan, hey Ryan, um, we already have that with the neo-traditionals, just for residential, if you think about it, they're right on the street.
You're talking over there off, like Bottega over there?
Yes.
Or, yeah. And that's what I mean, we, we have some of that. I don't know that we want or need more of it. I know that in other neighborhoods, I know when, when they were coming in and talking about the attached housing for the Michelson property, I know that people weren't really thrilled with that, so.
This is only for the urban neighborhood district, and if you think about it, I don't wanna say all the homes, but a lot of the homes are placed right there on the street.
So if you can.
Especially back behind where um, back behind the downtown buildings back here. A lot of those houses are placed pretty much right on the street.
They are. They're very close, and I mean, again, they're gonna be there. I'm thinking more down the line. I know what gets built today, and I know, you know, those are there. They're not going anywhere for the most part, unless.
So the urban, the urban neighborhood district that we've identified doesn't have any land that's big enough to do like a huge housing development. So those, those dis- I mean, um, those standards wouldn't like, wouldn't qualify for a large housing development. It would really only be for infill lots right now, or if somebody knocked an existing structure down and decided to build a home there.
Right. I know a lot of houses in town are owned by, a lot of houses in here owned by a large group. You know, there could be three, four houses together, and now all of a sudden, we're talking, we're talking a couple duplexes. Um, something to think about, and I agree with you, that's a good point, that we're not gonna have mass housing ending up like that, but it could be pretty decent-sized blocks.
Some of the, some of the structures that are built like that add to some, add to the walkability of the neighborhood at some um, and to some degree, in my opinion, as long as there's sufficient parking in the rear when they're up close, that's where we run into some of the problems in my mind. Um, but it does give it a, a kind of a walkability feel that I like about the houses that are um, close to the street like that, so I'm kinda just wanna throw that.
Yeah, one, one caveat I might put out there too, just, and I think it's in our current code, and we definitely wanna make sure that it's in the future one, as well as the design regs, and maybe under the design review code right now, is knowing that there's a variety of different housing options within the village, that homes that were built at different stages of the village's existence. But uh, one of the pieces that we use for design criteria a lot is if the home is uh, matches the, the harmony of its surroundings. Uh, and isn't, you know, an outlier for what is next to it, or a couple of homes down, or just to the, to the overall neighborhood feel in general. So you talked Bailey about not having a historical overlay district right off the bat. I don't think that's a problem, um, because as long as that caveat is in place and, and uh, we can note that, or it is going to be noted, or it can be noted during the design review process. I think that's a pretty major piece that will be used in consideration with any design that happens, especially for infill lots.
I agree, we should have that in there in every section, that language, cause that gives you some subjective leeway to where, where our standards don't match exactly each little neighborhood. Um, I agree. Over and out, get that in there, over and out.
Yep.
That was a note I had, that consideration must be given to exist in adjacent buildings.
All right, um, so everybody's good with that one? Um, I know Ben, you said you had a call out on fourteen. I have a couple on there as well as I'm, there's a lot of info on there, so I imagine several of you will. Um, going to fourteen, I know that I saw accessory dwelling unit on there. Um, marked as conditional. Um, we didn't end up doing those, so I'd like to see that changed. And then, of course, the multi-unit uh, living of five-plus units um, in corridor, in the corridor district, and in the village center district, I saw that. Um, probably should change that, and then. Um, probably should change that and then um, on down the list, I know there's some other ones, but I'll, Ben, I'll let you go.
I just said with pages fourteen and fifteen in general, my, my call out is if the, the map is going to be kind of realigned and maybe more fit to the future land use map, that it might speed things up if we kind of let Kim and Bailey review this list with what the next iteration will provide, because I think some things will change naturally as the boundaries adjust. But I had a lot of the same callouts too that you had Ryan, but to that end, like I said, I think a lot of those will naturally change.
Yeah, and I think we'll, I mean, again, we don't have to, and I guess I probably should have talked about this before. We don't have to get all the way through this document tonight. I know we have zoning to do, to go through too. Um, maybe we should have gone through zoning first, but um, coming through here, definitely like Ben said, go through, change up everything, true up the documents. Uh, my next note that I had, unless anybody has anything else, is on page sixteen. I had questions on, on the setbacks. Um, and I did see that we have layouts of these later on in the document, but I would definitely like to see, I don't know if you have anything, Kim, that you could show us on this of how these would lay out as far as setbacks and everything. Um, because again, um, I know I don't like to see things right up on the road, and if we're talking about setbacks, I see in there a fifteen feet. Um, now again, you had later on, I saw that you have your tree lawn, you have your sidewalk, you have another lawn on the side of that, so I think it is longer than fifteen feet, but I'm seeing some things pretty close up to the road. The other thing that I saw was your build to percentage of, of eighty-five percent, we're talking about, we're talking about eighty-five percent of the property line. I think that's quite a bit on there. And then I also saw on there the principal building height. Um, that we're talking about fifty feet, thirty-five feet max height. Thinking about how many stories of building they can fit into that, if that falls in with within the amount of stories that we're looking for, three stories.
Kim, you're muted. I didn't know if you knew that.
Doing Zoom and pushing the spacebar, sorry. Um, what uh, as far as the uh, the percent of the facade, it, it, it starts at eighty-five percent, which is really what you have right now in your buildings in the downtown, the historic core, and then it goes back to seventy-five percent uh, as you get into the more residential areas, but we can modify that and lower it if you want. As far as the heights are concerned, we tried to, you know, assume a certain, if you look on page, uh, I think it's seventeen, there's a, there's a ground floor and upper floor uh, maximum height that we put in there. And um, what it tells you is that, that we have a certain height for the lower floor and certain height for the upper floors, and that would be the max. So what we're saying is you want to try and have a certain, you know, regulate how the floor heights are, floor to ceiling heights are in the unit, or actually it's floor to floor in the building. And then also regulate the height, so you don't get someone to, you know, be putting as many floors as they can in, just given a certain height. So if you just go with height only, people will try to put as many floors as they can in that height. And you don't have the situation there where you have some fairly hurt, your first floors on your, some of your buildings are pretty high, especially in the core. Um, and you know, I think that's one thing I think um, to regulate as much as possible. So we try to keep it realistic with the three-story. So the thirty-some foot thing is gonna, thirty-five, I think it is, we had in there for three story. We'll accommodate that. Um, and it'll give you at least some room in there to do a higher first floor if you have a commercial building.
Right, and I think we want to, and that was something I thought about too, because you know, who doesn't love vaulted ceilings? And uh, seeing that, but you measure floor to floor, and I want to give, you know, I'd like to give people some room to play around with. Yeah, we do some twelve-foot ceilings here or there or, but I just don't want them to do, you know, seven-foot eight ceilings and stuff in as many stories as they can.
Yeah.
Do we have minimums in there? I guess that's, I see maximums.
Uh, no, we don't have. We just have the maximum height. Maxum in the height, meaning the floor, floor height?
Yeah, I guess I thought, I kind of, I think that's Ryan's trying to go is put minimums in there too, right Ryan?
Well, I, I don't, maximums I think sets up your, when you have your max, you're only gonna be able to do a couple of things, because they're measuring floor to floor. So if you have a max, you're only, you're only allowed to play with so much area. So I think that's fine. That's gonna kind of set your minimum. You're either gonna get your eight-foot ceiling or you're gonna get your twelve-foot ceiling. Or whatever you want to do, vaulted ceiling wise, you'll only get so much. So Ron could probably tell you maybe a little bit better than.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to put a minimum in, because they wouldn't go less than code required in any way, and I don't think anyone would do anything less than eight foot in either way.
Yeah. My thing on these, I'm not the most visual guy, so I just didn't know if you had any examples of these things or we could see the layout. I know that there's some layouts later on, which did help, but.
Um, I, I'm, I get the um, where they have the high percentages for the downtown historical center, because I mean, a lot of that, a lot of those buildings take up dang near a hundred percent of the lot. Um, but I know it's some, some, what some of us have talked about uh, maybe lowering the billable percentage for the residential lots. Uh, I know that's something that we've talked about and wanting to do in our code updates. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we want to match here. Start the discussion on that now. I think here it says, what, seventy-five? Um, let me bring it up here. So yeah, I'm good with the eighty-five percent for the downtown, but maybe the, especially the seventy-five percent, does that for, for how, for, you know, urban neighborhoods, that still seems like a lot. I don't know what you, about what you guys thoughts are on that.
Yeah, because again, on that map, we're talking the houses that are just outside of downtown. Some of those are pretty large lots, but I know we're not talking about seventy-five percent, and that's kind of where I was angling, like you said, Jesse. We've talked about lot usage coming up here, and I know it's, we're gonna talk about it more. When you get into the residential side, I think we want to see more yard and less house.
I'd like to add a comment on the facade. Um, some, some buildings, and actually we have uh, actually a couple right now on South Main Street. Uh, from the street, the facade looks very tall. But you, what you'll find out is it is basically a wall above the roof. And uh, s- some of them have uh, uh, modern heating and cooling systems set on the roof. And so the, the face of the building, and you see it in a lot of new buildings too, where they build the, the face of the building, sometimes in restaurants especially. There's a lot of them in New Albany too, where the face of the building goes way up. It's only a two-story building, but they've done that intentionally to put the equipment on the roof.
Hey Jim, um, can you refresh my memory on what our current percentage is for residential lots and what they can build on?
Thirty percent is for most of them. Hang on just a minute.
I think in some of the denser uh, districts, it gets up to thirty-five, but I think that's max.
So that needs to be, that's a lot lower than what I see, what I read here. Do you guys reading the same thing?
Yeah.
So does that seventy need to be lowered to like thirty-five?
I can't find my chart right now, but it's, it's thirty to thirty-five percent uh, for, that's for residential homes.
Yeah.
Our current zoning for like um, light manufacturing and, uh, well, and some GCC too, uh, you can, you know, you can put pretty much the building on the property line as far as that goes.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned, I'm, I'm not really concerned. My, my thoughts are angled around like the commercial or other stuff. It's mainly, uh, my thoughts are on the residential, which would be that's, my understanding is that that's the urban neighborhood category, right? Um, and I see this thing says, um, uh, lost it again. Let me bring it back. What did it say? Seventy-five or seventy percent?
Yeah.
So do we need to lower that Bailey to thirty-five? Is that, am I understanding this the right way?
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I would.
Your choice.
Because we're already gonna come through with that later. So again.
I just want to, I just want our, our plan, our standards to match our code as much as possible too, right? That's kind of where I'm going was just, and that's just the point that I, um, that, that just stuck out to me, but in, in as many aspects as we can, if we can make this match our code, it's gonna it'll save a, a everybody a lot of confusion in my mind, so.
Just, just a quick thought on that though, on a commercial building like KSEPS where they would have probably ninety percent coverage. If you get lower it too much, we wouldn't have that situation. And remember, if the codes, if this and the codes conflict, the more rigorous one applies. So the, the green face would, would apply no matter what uh, in the residential area. I just, I just don't want to exclude a commercial situation where you might want a seventy-five percent coverage, if it would be appropriate there.
We're just talking in the urban, urban neighborhood, the urban residential.
Yeah. That he's got, he brought up KSEPS, it's probably mapped out in our urban residential neighbor, in our. Um, so you're okay. That's a tough, it's just, it's kind of confusing, but it's a tough one. I, I, I kind of agree with you then there Ron that, um, since we don't have, since we can't differentiate between commercial and residential within the corridor, I guess we leave it as is. It just seems like it's, what's the point of putting anything?
It seems like it's really high though, especially in the urban neighborhood. Maybe we can back that down a little bit for where it would be appropriate in commercial.
Well, KSEPS is currently GCC one, is that not right?
Yeah. Yes. Urban, urban uh, neighborhood.
So if KSEPS is GCC one zone now, then it would fall under the commercial zoning.
And that's ninety percent of the.
So provided the design guidelines uh, overlap current zoning as well as future land use, then their neighbors would have the ability for ninety percent coverage too.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree Jesse, though that seems like that's all, that's, that's a lot of coverage. And if they had to, if, if to Ron's point, if they have to go with the least or the most restrictive, if there's a conflict between this and the code and blah, 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 all the other things, if they have to go to most restrictive, then, and my, the reading of this would be the most restrictive, even at eighty percent or seventy-five, because they're still under, they're still under the urban neighborhood um, corridor here. So that, in my mind, that would be the most restrictive, so they would never be able to build ninety percent again.
No, they would. They're zoning GCC.
So this, what, what, wouldn't this be more?
Right.
So they wouldn't be included in the urban neighborhood overlay district? Is the, no.
So we can, we can drop down the um, lot coverage percentage in urban neighborhood.
I would.
It was, Paul, I got exactly where Ron was coming from. The difficulty though is that example wouldn't necessarily apply real world just because of how it's currently zoned. But if you found yourself with a business like that, one-off zone or built, you know, pre nineteen eighty-eight with a significant amount of lot coverage mixed in with residential, then that would probably be a good case study of how this might apply.
And things like lot coverage, zoning takes precedence. So whatever your, your lot is zoned as, you have to follow the rules set out in the zoning ordinances. On the aesthetic design sense, we don't have as much written into the, into zoning, and so this is adding to that.
This is where the aesthetics come in for the, for the design review board. Okay.
Ryan?
Yep.
Just in the interest of going through the zoning code too, I might suggest putting a, a time deadline for us to go through the line to move on to zoning, just, just as a suggestion.
I was gonna arbitrarily, probably unfairly call it here at some point. I should have, we should have set the parameters when we started, but it is what it is.
All right.
And I figured we would stop. I, I mean, I've kind of planned to stop after eighteen anyway, because then we get into something totally different.
Not to delay, belabor this point here guys, but should this document have percentages in there if, if the zoning code has different percentages and that's gonna take precedent? Maybe we don't, we want to take out the lot, the buildable lot percentages from this whole chart. That's all I'm gonna say.
It should because a different board will be looking at it, so they need set parameters too. I mean, I guess they'll look at zoning as well, but um, there needs to be a plan in this, because I think the developers or anybody looking to build would look at this more first than they would the zoning probably, but I could be wrong there.
Well, I think like was stated before, uh, the more restrictive standard would prevail. That's how it's written in the beginning, whenever there's a conflict or perceived conflict in the standards. And so you can leave it that way, or we could eliminate from here. It's up to you. Uh, I think that's, you know, if you have it pretty well covered in the, in the zoning code right now, and that seems to work, then that's fine. We can just go by what the zoning code, just reference that.
Yeah.
The underlying, the underlying district that's in here, like the general commercial district.
So you guys are telling us that zoning is more restrictive than, than this is currently?
Yeah, the current zoning, well, the current, yeah, the current zoning is more restricted. Yes, yes, it is getting, it's saying that you have more open space than what this provides. This is more liberal as far as building areas.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been my understanding that um, what zoning you have on your books supersedes what you would have as far as design goes. As far as the terminology goes.
Yeah, zoning is pretty much the
Right.
The standard document.
I want them to match. I mean, I, I think that's what we all decide. We want everything to run together. Um, but if you're saying it's easier to restrict them on the zoning end, then I think we go with that.
I think we should just take lot coverage out of this document, because even if Kim and I change it to match our lot coverage right now, you guys might change those lot coverages in the next, you know, few weeks or a month. So I think that we should take lot coverage out right now.
Bailey, I, I agree. I don't, I think uh, having lot coverage in this, it just adds an element of confusion. And I would rather that you not show it at all. Let, let someone that's doing a design, let them ask or check our zoning codes.
I, uh, Ryan, before we called it, I had a suggestion for two other sections that we may consider removing from the document. Um, that make the review easier in the future.
Okay.
Um, just as we're wrapping up here, but um, pages eighty-seven and eighty-eight as well as ninety through ninety-nine having to do with vehicle parking and uh, site and building signage. Um, those are two areas that are um, very uh, take up a lot of consideration and a lot of discussion that are covered in our current code now. And if um, reviewing this, this code at the moment is more in line with the aesthetics and the visual, I think those may be two areas that uh, we can consider later. Um, just to uh, push more of a narrow focus. push more of a narrow focus on this document forward a little bit faster. I appreciate how those two areas are listed and outlined, and I very much like how the signage is represented, and want to see us consider that going forward, at least that layout. But for the purpose of reviewing the document, those are two sections that I think maybe we can, pull out and stick to the side for, for consideration later on, maybe, as we're going through our updated zoning code, since it's covered in there as well.
I'm not opposed to it, I think we're gonna see, I mean, obviously this is gonna overlap with zoning in a lot of places. I think this needs to be more about the, probably more about the aesthetics and general layout. So I think we can streamline those, I think that'd be fine, and just talk more about the aesthetics of the signage and, and things like that, but,
For me, the ninety, the pages in the nineties, I missed those. Sorry Ben, you're muted.
Yes, I am. Uh, sorry, I think it's ninety through ninety-nine, which I think is section fourteen. Section twelve, section fourteen.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit more about it once we get down that far. But I, I'm not opposed to it, I, I think we could probably streamline them a lot.
And maybe you have a reference, so this board could use, in, in areas that were taken out that are, that are in the code, maybe you could reference, just put a quick reference in to the design review, standards, the references, the code section. That way, the design review board might have those tools to utilize if, if they want, if they need to, without having to, you know, regurgitate the same thing, and worry about keeping them consistent through, through future, through the future, maybe, you know.
Yeah, we, we don't want to have to have them reinvent the wheel every, every time they go through the, through the process, I agree. Okay, last page there, we'll do seventeen, well, we'll do seventeen, eighteen, then we'll go to our zoning, but, seventeen here, I had, obviously accessory structure, height, we had talked about that a lot, I think when we did our ADU conversation. I know that's garages, accessory structure in that sense is garages, could be other things, but I think we're, and I know there's a lot of two-story garages, I know one guy here at the meeting has one, we've already talked about that one a lot. But I think we're at one story on that. And I don't know that we need it in a corridor area, I know there are accessory structures that they may have, but, I think we're at, we're at one story on that probably, right? And then, uh, talking, going down through here, I see, uh, down a little further when it talks about corners, uh, the corner and side facade there. When we're talking about a corner, I understand on most streets, it's pretty easy to see what the secondary street is, but, if you're talking about sixty-two and thirty-seven, which one's the secondary street? Jim could probably tell me.
Depends on what your address is.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that, uh, probably, thirty-seven would be the secondary street.
Okay.
Based on, based on the traffic volume, seventeen thousand cars a day on sixty-two. So it, it's busiest, uh, street in Johnstown.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought, that's, that's probably the, the worst, you know, for this. We'll be there, I doubt, hate to say it, but I doubt Duncan Plains will ever get that busy, but, could someday. I always try to think twenty years down the road, and then if we ever get out to three-ten and thirty-seven, if we ever get out that far where we have to look at it. I don't know what constituted a secondary road, and I guess if traffic's, traffic count is what does, then, then there you go.
Ryan, I might say you could probably keep two stories on accessory structure height. I don't think we need to limit it at one, two would probably be max in my opinion, because, thinking down north Maine too, you've got a lot of older homes that have, older barns behind it that are two stories high, where you've got parking, first floor and you've got, or this may be storage, and the consideration in that respect is probably, mainly from aesthetics to make sure that the design matches the surrounding as well as the home, like we talked about before, I, two stories would probably be, it's fine in my opinion.
I agree.
I agree with that Ben.
Okay. If you get into a corridor unit, I guess if you got an apartment complexes, that's where I saw it used later on here, they, they may have a garage or something. What I just don't want to see is, we get, if you're coming down the road and you get an angled lot, or if they angle something on there, I want it to be, your, I want your secondary structure as minimal as possible from your eye line. And if we get a single, if you get in a corridor, if you get, you're probably gonna have a two-story or one-story, I just don't want to end up with something behind it that's taller, that becomes more prominent to your viewpoint.
I think we may already have in the code where the accessory structure can't exceed the height of the primary, if I'm not mistaken.
True.
So if that's the case, then that should be covered from a sightline perspective.
But if you have, if you're on one lot and you have two-story or three-story building, and you have a large structure, so if you have a three-story building and a, and a two-story, garage or something back there, and then your neighbor has a one-story, and then they can see it over top, that would be the only thing that you could run into.
And then you ask yourself if it fits in in harmony with its surrounding, and that might be a consideration against it, or where you may be able to limit the, the structure size.
What do you guys think on that one?
Well, I just think that there's no way, there's, I mean, I think, it's, it seems silly to blanket, to have a blanket prohibition of to the two-story ones. And I think Ben's right, that the only way that, it seems that me, that with this document that you can, really narrow it down is by going back to the statement, doesn't fit into the surroundings, I mean, unfortunately, that's, that's gonna be our best, probably one of our best tools over and over again. It seems to be this situation too, because I think a lot of them, a lot of places have two-story garages in Johnstown, and I, I think it's appropriate, and I kind of like them, to be honest with you, so.
All right, anybody else have anything on seventeen? And going on to eighteen, the only thing that I had was under permitted building typologies there, uh, number two, under D. Talking about those restricting them a bit, duplexes, multiplexes, in our Village Center area, I know we have some already, but I don't know how much more we want.
I, I think we, I think we need to leave that as the option myself, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that planning and zoning can always say no to.
Right.
You know, doesn't have to approve the plans.
That's true, so I mean, and being in the,
And all of these, all of these things still have to follow the zoning ordinances and what's set up in the zoning ordinances.
Right. I know this is mostly about infill, um, at this point, because what we have is what we have. But on the infill, I was just, I wanted to see where everybody was at, as far as, as far as more dense housing coming in there. All right, well, that's all I had on that one, anybody else have anything for next time, just kind of overall?
I got one question for this page, I, I'm looking up a reference real quick, if I could have just one second.
While Ben is doing that, if you guys look ahead in the document and have a comment or a question, feel free to email me. Kim is great, and he gets to everything so quickly, so, if, even if it's just something little, it's much faster for us to get it done over a week, and kind of focus on the big things during our meetings, so feel free to email me with anything.
All right, I did, I did have a, uh, call out here, in this flex building medium and large, in the Village, or in the Historic District, is that right, or the Downtown District?
That's where you're talking, business on the bottom and living space up front.
Yeah, so if you, okay, Village Center, yeah. So the flex building medium and large, I don't know, as it's defined currently, would be appropriate in this space. If you look on page, forty, I believe they're defined as flex building medium, ranging from three to four stories, and flex building large from four to eight. So in my opinion, unless those definitions, maybe it doesn't forty? Isn't it forty? Or is it just loading? There you go. Yeah, so as those are defined there, I, I don't know if we want those buildings in the downtown space, because similar to the call out that I had from the beginning, in my mind, very much like exceeding the height of the library on a college campus, I don't know if you want to see buildings that high that are gonna supersede what's down there historically, and or, you know, kind of as an analogy, superseding the height of the cupola, uh, of the town hall that's down there right now.
Right, probably for the next forty years, you're gonna have those same buildings, but, it'll get amended later, but eventually, some of those buildings are gonna get severely remodeled or torn down at some point, I would imagine. And that's where you could get a building like that.
Don't we already have medium flex buildings down there?
We pretty much have that already. We have that already, but you could end up with a really large one.
Including,
If we limit the stories.
Why don't you just, take out, just have flex buildings listed as an individual listing and get away from the small or medium or, uh, large, and, uh, let that become part of the design. Obviously, the space that, uh, the building's going to be built in will dictate how big the building is going to be.
Yeah, that's true, and we've already limited stories allowed in other, in another spot, so yeah, that's true.
I, I think we just have flex buildings, period.
I'm fine with that, as long as the height in that space isn't gonna be obtrusive or out of place with all, with, with what is already down there. So that was my call out.
Yep, no, totally agree on that one, I like what Jim said on it, if we're limiting, if we're limiting height, I mean, which building goes eventually down there, it's gonna be, it'll depend on what's next to it for how big you can actually build anyway. Unless you manage just to buy all the buildings down there, which could happen, but.
So if we only have one flex building type, would it be, which illustration would be the best, the, the medium one? To go is what you'd want to illustrate it with?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
That, that feels more representative, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so next time, um, next time we talk about this, we'll kind of recap what we just went over, and, uh, we can come in here, what do you guys want to talk about on the next go-around? I kind of would like to split this up, probably another third of the document, and then, uh, because we'll still have zoning again, so probably another third of this, I would say.
Sounds good to me.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, we made it to page nineteen today, so I imagine we'll make a little more progress next time, I think that's a good idea.
Thanks for walking along with us, Kim, I appreciate the help.
My pleasure, yep, appreciate the input. We're getting there.
Yeah, I think you can kind of see at this point where we're headed, so, um, as we go through here, I, I'm sure you'll have some other ideas and things.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, well first, any, uh, any public comment on this? I don't know if Chip's still on here, I think he's off. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to our zoning ordinance draft.
So, um, we're gonna be moving into part three, which I think is gonna take us the longest, and that is because that is all of our zoning districts. On the agenda tonight, I put, articles twelve through fourteen, because after article fourteen, we get into the SR districts, and I think it would be good to have us do all of those in one night. So you guys can go ahead, I think, uh, you know, you've already looked at rural residential, so I'm not, unless you guys have any large changes for that district, I don't think that this will, tonight's parts will take too long, but I don't really want to go farther than article fourteen tonight, just because I do think it's a good idea to talk about all the SR districts at one time.
Did I have that wrong on the agenda? I had articles seven, nine.
Yeah, it says seven, eight, nine, but, um, we did seven, eight, nine at the last, last time, didn't we? I think we did through eleven.
Yeah, we talked a lot about one certain appeal.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it is the appeals process.
Oh, I thought we talked about non-conforming structures last time.
Just one specific, kind of, um.
We did a part eleven already, I know that.
Yeah, I have your comments written in here.
Yeah, I have us on twelve.
Yeah, part eleven was our last meet, I think is where our last meeting ended up, as far as my notes go.
I have us on twelve.
If you guys aren't ready to talk about this part, we can put, we can hang, wait until the next meeting.
I think we're ready.
I haven't read as much, because I was reading the design standards this time, um, so I'm, I'm late on my assignment here, but, we'll catch up, I'm sure you guys have enough.
That's okay, so, so article twelve and thirteen sort of, um, outline what the, what the uses are. So like, what is a conditional use and, and things like that, and then, um, thirteen just explains the district map, and then, article fourteen, you guys have already reviewed, because that's rural residential, and you guys, I'm pretty sure all of you voted on rural residential when we first implemented it, and so that wording is exactly the same to what you voted on. So I didn't actually think that you would have too much to review this week, and, um, actually what I might do is, pull up the zoning map, so you guys can take a look at that. Obviously, this is just a draft, and I will send it to you, so you can review it in more detail.
All right, uh, so yeah, we can go through this, Ben, what do you have on, uh, on this one for tonight?
So I've done, I've given feedback through, section twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Go through it as much as I can, as often as I can. Overall, I think it might be good, similar to the design guidelines, to maybe have a break. Um, overall, I think it might be good, similar to the design guidelines, to maybe have a breakout in the front. Like how we had permitted and conditional, just to break out of all the different type of zoning districts that we're outlining. And, uh, maybe some metrics that apply, just as, almost as a quick reference guide, as a table. So you can just look at, I think, similarly to how we have this, the sign regs set up right now in our current zoning. It just might be a, a good, quick, easy reference to look at, you know. Once we get through the end of this, uh, what the lot coverage requirement is or allowability is for all the different zoning codes, what the setbacks are. And stuff like that. So just an overall suggestion. To section twelve, um, I'd say first up is probably twelve oh two oh three. Uh, which is accessory uses, uh, right off the bat. And this may be, uh, an opportunity, if we wanted to talk about it today, or if we wanted to circle back with some more thought on this. Uh, you know, at first thing at the next meeting, but I think there's probably an opportunity for accessory uses. To, again, relative to what our current zoning code listed, better define what is an accessory, uh, structure. Uh, how you do, how you categorize an accessory structure. I think it is great in here that we have twelve oh two oh five, which lists similar uses. Um, which I think is, is a good addition. But I think now would be a good time in the new code to, to better break out accessory uses. Since it has become kind of a, uh, a, a, a point of conversation, uh, through several meetings. At the end of twenty twenty, the beginning of twenty twenty-one. So, you know, is an accessory, uh, uh, structure. Defined as a shed without a permanent foundation, uh, an above-ground pool. You know, uh, a patio that is not, um, attached or close to a home, a fire pit. Now, I'm just throwing things out there for the sake of conversation. Um, but how detailed do we get with an accessory structure? And then the, the, the other conversation we touched on in the design piece was then how do you, uh, uh, break out. Quantitatively accessory structures toward lot coverage percentage. So I think accessory structure definitions is probably key to the overall conversation about lot coverage. So. Just putting it out there.
A full chapter, a full chapter on accessory uses, if anybody wants to review it further, is located in chapter thirty-two.
Yeah, because I was going to say, it doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't fit into this, our accessory dwellings, because this is all about uses of. Doesn't fit into this section on mine, but. I do agree with your, with your general principle that it needs to be, we should incorporate that in here, Ben. Let's put a note on that section below.
Yeah, basically, accessory building, there's an accessory, uh, building and structure section of thirty-two. So perfect call out. So there's a whole section applied to that coming forward, so we have that to look forward to. And we don't have to talk about that tonight, so that's good.
This section just explains for the purposes of the, it kind of provides definitions for the purposes of the following zoning districts. And then it, so like accessory uses says basically what an accessory use is. And then it says that you have to follow the requirements in article thirty-two of this ordinance. So then you would go there to find the very specifics.
Yeah, this whole first section looks like it's mostly just definitions, which I don't, don't see much I disagree with.
Yeah, this section is sort of, so if, uh, if a resident was looking at this code. And they were looking at, let's just say, a residential district and they were thinking, okay, what's an accessory use? They could go back here and just see, you know, the very basic definition, here's an accessory use, and here's where I go to find the rules for it.
Call out about twelve oh two oh seven with development plan. Um, what would be current practice if a development plan is approved and there were deviations happening to that during. The development of a particular project?
What do you mean deviations? Like if they wanted to change something in their development plan?
Yeah, like if they, if, if there was a, uh, a change to what was presented. Um, and they were constructing something differently, um, relative to what was presented. Is there, is there recourse already, uh, in play for the municipality to exercise? Or should something be listed here as a part D?
Uh, Ben, they would, uh, they would have to refer to section nine oh one in our current ordinances. That's what it's for, it's for, uh, variance, uh, from basically what was agreed upon or required.
Yeah.
They didn't file a variance and they just did something different. And we found out about it later. What's the?
I don't know. I, I guess it would depend on whether it was, they'd put up a bond for the project. I, I guess it would be, I don't know if it's a good answer for that. I think it would depend on all the variables, what type of. Uh, what they did that was different, that, uh, was not allowed in our current code. I don't know if we could put a work stop on the project. We could probably do that if it was severe enough.
It would be hard for them, though, to get later approvals, like, you know, occupancy approvals or even engineering review approvals. If they changed what was agreed upon, because even after planning and zoning agrees upon development plan, that development plan then goes through. Engineering and then engineering sets up pre-construction meetings where they talk about like, what's required to start construction. So it would be hard to, at least to me, it seems like it would be hard to do, construct something that wasn't agreed upon. Because it still goes through so many steps before something is actually put in the ground.
Okay, then that's perfect. I was going to suggest something if there wasn't clear-cut, uh, ability to do anything. Or if we thought that there was potential, but that's.
But if they wanted to change something and be upfront and, you know, do it before they start construction, yeah, they'd have to get a variance. If the development plan was already approved. Or do a whole new development plan, which seems, it seems to me that they would just ask for a variance.
Perfect. Now I don't have any other call outs for twelve.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're pretty good on that one.
Anything else for twelve?
I think we're good on that one. Uh, go to thirteen. Anybody have anything on thirteen?
After tonight's meeting, I'm going to email you all the draft zoning map. And obviously, as we run through these districts, that zoning, and as you make comments on the map, that'll change. But I just want you guys to be able to have it while we're running through the districts and then, so you guys can suggest changes to that as well. Do we have anything on thirteen?
Thirteen's pretty short. I don't think anybody would have anything on that.
Okay.
Just note, I think we added in the annexation aspect there at the bottom, which was good.
Yeah, thirteen point. Yeah, thirteen point oh four is the section that you guys voted in to go along with rural residential. And then section fourteen is what we have on the books for rural residential. And it's, uh, as far as I can remember, the wording is exactly the same as what we have on the books. So it's up to you if you want to update that or make any changes.
I think there was one change that was left out. If you look at eleven forty-two oh four in our current code. Number H.
See, I think. So in rural residential there, if we wanted to add ADUs, rural residential is pretty much where they were going to go, right? So if we wanted to add ADUs, we could just make it a, it, it labels accessory uses here. We could add ADUs in right here and then just define them.
It wouldn't have any of the. It wouldn't have any of the standards that you set up in the previous document. Unless we put those into a section in accessory uses in thirty-two.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about. If we wanted to do it, we could just do it right here because council didn't like how it was done before. I think everybody's in agreement. We love these things when they're helping a family member. We don't like them when they're a rental. Um, but we wanted to pretty much just limit those to rural residential, so I think you could do it here, couldn't you? Because it says, what is it, chapter, currently, it's like chapter thirteen something, where it says no accessory dwelling units. But if we amended, if we amended it under here to say that you could have an accessory dwelling unit in rural residential. Then define it later on under accessory uses, we could just do that.
Ben, what were you referring to? That I?
Eleven forty-two point oh three H.
Home occupation. That's listed here in accessory uses. The, um, section fourteen point oh three C.
Okay, so we just have it listed under accessory. I was matching conditional to conditional. I see. Okay.
The reason that I did that is you'll see as we move down into the other ones that, um. Uses have been split into permitted, accessory and conditional. So we can change that back to just permitted and conditional or leave it. It's up to you guys.
You could add ADUs into that conditional too. I know that's how Jesse liked it earlier, having ADUs listed as a conditional use.
To Bailey's point, you want to have it listed in each zone that they're allowed? Or have it broken out in section thirty-two that I found out about tonight? Um, and then list in that section and update and amend to what districts they are permitted.
I think you listed, I mean, I think we already agreed that this is the only one we want to allow it into.
Yeah, if you're only doing it one district.
Yeah, so you list it here and then you outline it what's allowed under thirty-two.
Yeah, I agree. You put it here and then you, you define it later on.
And you don't even have to allow it as a guaranteed use here. You could just put it under conditional uses. Right?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think that's the restrictions we all wanted out of that whole plan anyway.
I agree.
We might want to change the, well, we said more than two accessory structures are, structures are permitted for agricultural uses only, so. That wouldn't, um, accessory dwellings wouldn't count. So that's good.
Which, I mean, a, a rural residential lot that comes into Johnstown is not really going to qualify for a traditional ag use anyway. And we're going to limit your farm animals here later on, so that's in our, so.
Yeah, we don't even have agriculture as a usage within the village anyway.
Right. So you're not going to have a barn for your cattle and then a corn crib and then a house for grandma. You're not going to have that.
Although I will, just so, uh, you're aware, we do have farm usage. We, uh, existing on Sportsman's Club Road, we have a farm with animals, uh, with, with cattle. And crops, and it is within the village and it's in the light manufacturing area.
So in that case, when we put a limit on farm animals, maybe we could say something about if you're an actual, like, working. I don't know, then we'd have to define what a working farm was, so.
Do you anticipate that farm to be there for a long time, Jim?
Um, yeah, I do. I really do. Uh, it's a cross from, well, it's on the backside. Of the light manufacturing district, uh, at, uh, Fronton Sportsman's Club Road. And it goes all the way up to almost the Hillcraft Golf Course.
Well, when we limit farm animals, we'll limit them in residentially districts.
Correct.
And that farm is not zoned residential.
Right.
I think by the time there would be a certain, I mean, by the time there'd be a conflict with that specific property, that area will have changed a lot. Is what I'm saying.
And actually, actually, the person that owns it, and he just bought, um, I, I think last, or two years ago, he added another eighty acres to it. Uh, because he had an opportunity to buy it and he had a couple million dollars he needed to invest. Anyhow, uh, his plan long-term is to build homes there for his children and divide the property up. So each one would have twenty, twenty, twenty-five acres.
Nice. He should adopt me.
He wouldn't adopt me, so you might have a better chance. You're younger.
Do we have any other additions to section fourteen?
I, I just have one, uh, thing we should consider, maybe, uh. We get back to fourteen oh five oh four, the minimum side yards. Are we okay with the eight-foot side yards? Just saying it's, uh, the minimum lot width is a hundred and fifty feet. It sounds like eight-foot side yards are really tiny. Anyone remember why we made him that small? I don't.
I think we did that to allow for agricultural buildings, so a larger barn or something like that.
I guess you would assume that those lots, if you had multiple in rural residential, that they're probably larger. Budding each other anyway, so you wouldn't necessarily think you'd have people building on top of each other. Even though it's, it's what, three feet more than what the residential side yard is at five foot? Yeah.
We can increase it if you guys want.
Separate them out, but maybe put twenty foot for primary residence, eight foot for accessory building, and it gives us some trouble.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea. Just wondering if we ever had two of these rural residential lots right next to each other. And they just put their house eight foot out the property line, that's going to look really strange.
Well, you probably had twenty foot for primary, primary residence as well as ADU, correct? Or you want to have? Yeah.
That's all I.
I'll add that in. Um, that's all I have tonight. Like I said, I really want to do the SR one, SR two and SR three. Altogether, and I think that those are going to be longer, so we'll do those at the next meeting, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And I'm going to share this map with all of you. And I broke it out into separate zoning districts too. So there's, there's one large map in this document that I'm going to send you, and then there's maps with each district broken out. So you can see them all.
For those that hadn't seen it, this is what I was referring to earlier about the residential office. Um, proposed district down, uh, Koshoktham between Oregon and, uh, Westview.
Sort of in the greenish color. So I will send that to you guys probably tomorrow. You can start reviewing that as well.
Yeah, it looks good. Thank you.
All right. Uh, oh, and then the, uh, he goes, uh, outlined those pretty good last meeting. Anybody have anything else?
I just wanted you guys to see them all typed up. And then we talked about putting some of our goals underneath number two, so I just labeled them as our sub-goals for number two.
Yeah. ADUs, I think, obviously moved down the list, other than, unless we just cured that problem talking about it in rural residential.
It probably has a greater conversation as we continue to go through the zoning code. But yeah, I would, I would say at this point, it's got a lower priority than some of the others.
Did you come up with any feedback why they weren't happy with it? Any direction for us to go?
In the meeting, it was called out, it was taken off the table and voted on and failed 6-1. I voted to vote it down. And the only reason I voted it down is because at this point, the reason it was on the table was because of the additional conversations we wanted to have or should have in planning and zoning before it would be brought up to consideration for potential unintended consequences. So in passing it in council, I didn't feel like it would exude the outcome that we were looking for when we passed it to council, which is why it was tabled in the first place. So there is some support for it, but there's obviously more support against it in its current form at this current state. But I did ask before it was voted on that there be, if there was any feedback directly from council about pros or cons or considerations for further deliberation, that it be passed along. I haven't heard anything. I don't know if Bailey or Jim has at this point.
I have not, Ben.
I haven't either.
All right. Um, yeah, I think on those ADUs, if we add them as a, as a conditional use or we'll talk about them when we get to 32.
I'll just leave them in goals because it seems like we want to continue the conversation.
Yep, I think we're good with the goals, though.
Do we have any, do, I was just thinking, did we, because they don't have readily available what our goals were for last year? I just kind of wouldn't, I don't think I have mine still, but I wouldn't mind just running through to see if there's anything we left on the table. We might want to, that we might want to revamp, forgot about. If we don't, if no one has those readily available, then I guess we just pass on that.
I don't have them readily available on me now, but I can email them to you. I have them all written down in the document.
Yeah, that'd be cool. Everyone can just look through and if there's anything strikes our interest that we left on the table, that's good with me. But I think, I think we got our hands full with the, with the code and the resign, and their design stuff. At least that would take most hands full for a while, so.
Okay.
Jesse, I think looking the notes that I had before, the only things that we took off were the strategic plan update, which we passed. The commercial and residential development process and packet was completed. Annexation policy was adopted. ADUs we kept on and the incubator business passed off to economic development and the community improvement corporation. But I think other than that, anything else that was on there, we kind of pulled over and just reprioritized.
Yeah, you guys used the previous year's goal list to create this one.
Okay. Sounds good. I just want to make sure we did, so. I like the list.
It's a good list. It's aggressive, but I think it's very, very doable and, and very, very needed.
All right, guys. Well, anything else new? Bailey or Jim, anything else new coming down the ladder here?
I think we're gonna be hearing from Ace Hardware very soon.
Okay.
For an application.
And also, we're gonna have a variance. It won't be at our next meeting because I just got it today and I have to work on it. It'll be the second meeting in February. It's for a, there's gonna be a lot split on North Main and a variance where one property is allowed access through a 25-foot driveway off of North Main. The variance is going to be to allow two properties access off of North Main in a 25-foot driveway that was approved many years ago by a former village manager.
Okay. All right. Good deal, guys.
Two houses with one driveway?
Yes, yes. And we have that now.
It's interesting.
Yeah, we, we have houses on, on Main Street now that have two houses and one driveway.
Just go up and you get a basketball court up there at the top of two garages on each side.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Well, good deal, guys. Good work. We'll kind of do the same thing. Next time, we'll talk about the next third of, of our guidelines there. And then on the zoning, the zoning ordinance draft, we're talking about our SR1s, SR2s there.
Yes.
Good deal, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Wait, wait.
We'll make an official motion. We'll make, we're so informal now on these calls.
I could just make that.
Yeah, just do what you want there, Teresa. Just.
What I want.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.